Before to order, will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Certainly, Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Rouse.
Here.
Councilmember Hart.
Here.
Councilmember Sinan.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
And Mayor Mario is not present this meeting.
Okay, and we have one ceremonial item. Couldn't you say ceremonial now? Good luck with the title of the item, which is Red Ribbon Week. I knew it. I knew it'd be Elmer Fudd. Hope I don't have to say that too many times. Whereas Red Ribbon Week is the longest-running nationwide campaign for the drug abuse prevention and education promoting healthy, drug-free lifestyles, and whereas this annual effort in the last week of October by the Friday Night Live program offers our students the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles by promoting visible, unified prevention and education efforts, and whereas California Friday Night Live was developed in 1984 as a statewide model program to reduce alcohol use and other problems among young people by building partnerships for positive and healthy young development that engages youth and active leaders and resources in their own communities, and whereas the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse has hosted Santa Barbara County Friday Night Live since 1986 to provide local students leadership opportunities to prevent the use and abuse of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, and whereas schools, government agencies, law enforcement, local businesses, religious institutions, service organizations, families, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles through school and community campaigns. Now therefore, I, Randy Rouse, in place of Kathy Mario, by virtue of authority vested in me as the Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Santa Barbara, do hereby proclaim October 23rd to 31st as Red Ribbon Week in the City of Santa Barbara. I invite the Santa Barbara community to support and participate in alcohol prevention and drug prevention activities to support this year's theme, "Life is Your Journey, Travel Drug-Free." Congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, City Councilmembers. On behalf of the students of the City of Santa Barbara's Friday Night Live program, I would just like to share a little bit what happened a couple of weeks ago prior to this is that we were chosen to present on the civic engagement activities that our students here have participated in with some of the smoke-free ordinances and observations that we do and the peer-to-peer education that happens on each of the campuses. And they were amazed by the amount of support that we were able to get from you as City Councilmembers with teenagers and how we were able to work together and the welcoming arms that you give our students when they come and speak. So, thank you so much. This is really a great honor for everyone here in Santa Barbara City.
Hello, I'm Councilmembers. My name is Selena Rockwell, and I oversee CADA, Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, and school-based programs. So, we have our prevention, you know, drug and alcohol prevention, which Friday Night Live is part of. We also do therapeutic counseling, a lot of different, and treatment programs. And we really appreciate all of your support for what we do because the big thing about drugs and alcohol, and you all know, is that nobody can do it just individually, and it takes all of us together. And what Adriana was speaking about is she oversees Friday Night Live, a coalition of youth that meet once a week, and they really go out and they do things in the community to make a difference in regards to drugs and alcohol. And it means so much to have your support in all that they do. And I just want to say thank you. And we also have, in our schools, we have a lot of different activities going on that encourage teens to make positive, healthy choices, get them involved in positive things in their life, and we thank you for your support so much.
Thank you. Great organization, great work.
Thank you.
Mr. Casey, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. We will go to public comment. Public comment is for items that are not on the agenda. We will give two minutes per speaker. We are not prone to respond to public comment if you have questions or if a council would like to meet with you later. Holly's in the back room. We can arrange a meeting for that. And we hope that everyone observes decorum and doesn't interrupt, clap, to pod, or otherwise make noise during speaking. You want to hear everybody's comments. The first comment will come from Lori, I believe it's Lace.
Lace.
Lace. And you have a few people giving their time. You have Caitlin Kirchner.
Yes.
Are you here? You have Harmony Ash.
Ash.
Ash. I'm getting nothing right here. And Max Parker. Okay, very good. So, you will have eight minutes. Ms. Lace.
Thank you, Councilmembers. It's an honor here to be in front of you. And, Mr. Casey, this year, our Boys and Girls Club is celebrating 80 years in our community, and I thought we'd just like to come and share a few words about what the club means to this community and our families, and especially our kids. We were started in 1938 by a group of firemen. So, firemen got a call up on the mesa. They were growing apricots, and they had a group of young boys picking apricots illegally. Officer, don't hear that over there. And said, you know, well, we don't have anything to do. You know, we're picking apricots, we're selling them, and they saw a need, and they started a Boys and Girls Club with their unused firehouse over on Haley Street. It started off in 1938 with 10 boys, and by the end of the year, we had 207 official members. This is a picture of one of the first pictures that they had, and that's their little logo, the Boys Club. We didn't add girls till the 90s. That's when they got smart, and they added boys and girls. You can go to the next one. So, here's our history. We have a vivid history. We were one of the first after-school programs in this city to offer after-school tutoring and programming. And in the early days, we actually had a full woodshop workshop that they learned the skill of woodworking. They learned, like, electrical. We have huge ceramics, and they had art shows and contests on building and creating stuff in the early days in our big workroom that we had there. This is the club as it is today. We're very proud of the club. So, as I said, we were at the firehouse originally. World War II started, and our building, our new building, was put on hold until after the war. It started up in 1945 and was completed in 1947. And that part you're seeing there is an addition, but the original part over to the right is from our original building in 1947. So, currently, to date, as of last month, we have 1,391 club members. Outreach to our community is 3,390. Why this is so important, and we like to share it with the city, is we only charge $40 per year, and we also give that scholarship to, we're typically from low-income families, so that $40 means a lot to them. And what we give is after-school tutoring, educational opportunities, internet access, free computers use, and many more things, sports and stuff like that. We'll go on. This year, we had a huge summer program. We served 656 kids. We provided 219 scholarships. This is a full-day program. So, for nine weeks, we gave away 200 scholarships to other families that wouldn't have the hundreds of dollars it costs for summer camp, and we served three meals a day, and all of it was free. This is a picture of some of the stuff. The top pictures are the ones, we took the kids on a camping trip in the early days. All summer long, we took the kids camping up in Los Padres Forest, and we kind of brought that back this year. I brought that back and took the kids camping in Lake Ochuma, and some of the kids had never been on a boat, so we took them on a boat, and it was pretty life-changing for some of these kids. This is a teen program. We have a very active teen program of over 500 teens. As you can imagine, we're right next to the high school in Cana Perdido, and in between the high school and the junior high. So, it's a great place for the kids to have a safe place after school, and we do, like CADA does, we do a Friday Night Live, too. So, it's open on Friday nights until 10 o'clock, and they have activities and programs they do. Oh, wait, go back for one sec. So, this weekend, last weekend, right, we did a community cleanup over at the Armory, and that's Mayor Mario in the middle right there. We volunteered with Los Boys Camp and did, I don't know if you've been by the, I know Jason has the Armory. It was looking pretty shabby with the weeds. So, they cleaned up the garbage and did the weeds. It was really great. Next one. And some of our partnerships, we have the Police Department, Fire Department that came by this summer. We have the Forest Service, and then we work with Outreach Global Awareness Group out of UCSB called World Healers, and that's really great for our teens. They love that group. Some of the things that we do, we're really focused on mental wellness at our club for some of our kids, and we work with AHA. We work with COM. And then we also brought in last year Equine Assisted Psychotherapy. So, the horses come twice a month and do some interactive therapy sessions with the kids. And part I said with the free meals, we are part of the Santa Barbara School District Supper Program, so we offer dinner there, and then we also offer snack. Education is big for us. We have Power Hour. It's a tutoring program. And thank you, too, I'm thanking you for the city, for our CDBG grant that you guys sponsor. We just got the new one for next year, and so thank you. And that is a one-on-one tutoring program that we have an hour a day, five days a week. And we just added a science club. It's pretty cool on Fridays. We also offer sports. We've been doing sports. It's a big hub for basketball for generations since we started, football and soccer. And I think one of the things that I'd like to share with everybody, what's important is we have generations of families that have come to the club. So, not only the young kid just starting, AJ in kindergarten, his mom and his uncle went, his grandmother and grandfather went to our club, and I think that that's what's so important about our club and about the $40 membership. I think when we started, it was 50 cents, and so keeping that fee low is really important in providing scholarships so every child has access to after-school opportunities. It's really important to our staff and our board and our supporters, and I just want to thank the city, you know, for offering that CDBG grant to us. It's really important. It helps us offset some of the costs. It costs a lot to do one-on-one tutoring. Some people have tutoring, and when you have kids come in that are one or two grades below where they're supposed to be, it's hard on them emotionally, and, you know, they kind of want to shut down, but when you had somebody willing to put in the time, one-on-one with them and tutor, it's important. So, it really makes a difference in our kids' lives, and we're here to share how we feel about the club because we're really proud of it, and also, too, to thank the city and the council and Paul over there, just for supporting us. I think it's important to us, and it means a lot. So, we're really glad to be here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker is Kenneth Locke, followed by Nancy Martin.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I spoke before you last week. I mentioned the whole idea that at the tennis courts, they had a tennis tournament, and I equated that tournament to be Special Olympics, and I think I defined it as the idea that none of the participants had the mental facility, say, intelligence or education in relation to what it means to be physically healthy, and then the idea of the connection between mental health and physical health. It turns out that they all suffer from what I refer to as a mind-body gap, and so I can actually now bridge, I've bridged that gap and actually can provide now an education, knowledge, you know, in relation to, it turns out that right now, I'll go before the school board this evening, and I mentioned that they're actually teaching the kids how to not be intelligent, not how to be coordinated. Bad combination. And the idea is that when the kids are taught and they promote, you know, the sport of tennis in relation to just the development of one arm and just for the sake of competition, I'm kind of the first, first, say, genius of tennis who had the intelligence enough to be able to, really to completely understand that complete lacking and actually have kind of the authority to speak here before you and make you aware of the situation. And the idea is that one thing that the school could promote, as well as the Boys and Girls Club, is for the kids for their mental and physical health, would be to promote ambidexterity, whole body. And to be an athlete, it turns out, really to be an athlete, you're going to have to be ambidextrous. It just goes hand-in-hand type of thing. Sports have actually corrupted our society, and it needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Martin, followed by Phil Walker.
My name is Nancy Martin, and I'm representing the United Nations, USA, Santa Barbara and Tri Counties, and I'm coming with an invitation for tomorrow, we have an event, tomorrow is U N Day, and so we have an event at the University Club from 2:00 to 4:00, and it's about climate, and that's something that everyone is concerned about right now. And so, we're going to have Carl Hotterer give a talk, a short talk, and then we're going to discuss it. So, we're going to break into small groups and have facilitators and see what ideas we come up. So, I want to invite all of you. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Phil Walker.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro Tem Rouse and the rest of the members of the City Council. You know, all I'm asking for, and a lot of the neighbors, too, that live around me at Quinientos in Voluntario, is just, there's a double-yellow line off the pedestrian island, what's called pedestrian refuge island, which they give a false sense of security, but there's about a 35-to-40-foot double-yellow that proceeds west on Quinientos, and just a single yellow broken line would be great, something to put a center-line demarcation on that road, because, you know, think about this. I drove past Mazalon in 1966. I must have been nuts with three other surfer friends, and there was always a sign, I remember, at the narrow bridges over the washes and whatever. It's, I think it was Puente Agnóstro. It means, I think, correct me on my understanding of it, but it means narrow bridge. But you didn't need a sign, because if you were on that bridge, the trucks always had the right-of-way, and the same situation's going on in Quinientos. You have a lot of commercial, very large vehicles, industrial-strength vehicles, those too, very large SUVs, and just some sort of line of demarcation from east to west on Quinientos would be a big help. Thank you.
Thank you. And that closes public comment. We'll go to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, do you have a few items to read?
Yes. Item two, introduction of ordinance to grant easements to Southern California Edison at downtown parking lots and the police station. Recommendation that council, A, introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the city administrator to execute public utility easement deeds to Southern California Edison at Granada Garage Parking Structure Lot 6, Surface Parking Lot 5, Surface Parking Lot 3, Parking Structure Paseo Lot 10, and the Police Station Building for above-ground transformer equipment associated with the downtown reliability project. Item three, adoption of ordinance for sole-source purchase order for police station's soil-vapor extraction project. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the city's general service manager to issue a sole-source purchase order to Rincon Consultants, Inc., for operation and maintenance of the soil-vapor extraction system at the Santa Barbara Police Station through the end of the soil-vapor extraction project for a total purchase order amount of $559,222 over the next four years with $154,048 in fiscal year 2019, $161,173 in fiscal year 2020, $162,246 in fiscal year 2021, and $81,755 in fiscal year 2022, and authorize expenditures of up to 10% per year for extra services that may result from necessary changes in work. Item four, adoption of ordinance amendments related to debt forgiveness to Santa Barbara Affordable Housing Group in support of an affordable housing project located at 1116 Delavina Street, Garden Court. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving an amendment to an affordability covenant to extend the term with Santa Barbara Affordable Housing Group and authorizing the Community Development Director to execute such agreements as necessary. And finally, item 11, Tefra Hearing for Covenant Retirement Communities, Inc. Decks Issuance. Recommendation that council hold a public hearing and adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the City Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving the issuance of the Colorado Health Facilities Authority Bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $68 million for the purpose of financing the construction, renovation, remodeling, and/or equipping of certain facilities located in California, including certain facilities owned or managed by Covenant Retirement Communities, Inc., and Covenant Retired Communities West, DBA the San Vicand, Heritage Court, Brandell Hall, and the Smith Healthcare Center located in the City of Santa Barbara.
Thank you. Are there any items that anybody needs to pull from the consent calendar? And we have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Okay, I think that was moved, Omega, Second Heart. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Gutierrez, report from the Ordinance Committee, please. Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. We held a special meeting today on the proposed residential tenant protection ordinances, and after a full meeting, decided not to rush some of the details, and we'll be coming back to ordinance with some minor changes and after discussion, and it will come back to ordinance before it comes back to council.
Okay, thank you very much. Move on to Community Development Department. Item number 13, Miss Stotts. Sir, would you please read the item? I'm new at this.
That is item 13, fiscal year 2020, Human Services and Community Development Block Grant Funding Process Priorities and Criteria.
Okay, Ms. Stotts.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Hi, everybody. I am Liz Stotts. I am the Community Development Program Specialist for this city. I'm here today to talk to you about the grant allocation process for fiscal year 2020. As part of the allocation process each year, council authorizes solicitation of funding proposals, approves the process and criteria and priorities for funding, and establishes a human services funding commitment from the General Fund. The city awards grant funds from two funding sources. There are federal Community Development Block grant, the CDBG funds, and city human services funds that are made available from the General Fund. Both funds are allocated concurrently during a single allocation process. The purpose of the CDBG program is to provide low- and moderate-income persons with decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expanded economic opportunities. CDBG funds can be used for a variety of uses, capital primarily, and that includes infrastructure improvements, rehabilitation, and economic development, and 15% of funds can be used for public service activities. The city's specific priorities for CDBG funding were adopted in 2015 as part of the city's five-year strategy for use of CDBG funds, and these include homeless assistance to individuals and families and victims of domestic violence, public facilities and infrastructure, so that means improving facilities of organizations that serve low- and moderate-income persons, and public infrastructure and parks improvements in low- and moderate-income neighborhoods. Economic development programs are supportive programs that provide self-employment training and small-business loans. The amount of CDBG funding in the last few years has trended upward. This was preceded by significant cuts in the last few years, so even though we've gone up, we're still nowhere near what we used to get. We cannot predict how much we're going to get for fiscal year 2020, but for planning purposes, we are estimating level funding of $906,524. The committee generally makes contingency plans to the recommendations for funding to council in case we get actual increases or decrease once we do know how much we're actually getting. City human services funds are made available to council, are made by council, to support organizations that provide social and public service activities to residents that are low and moderate income. The city human services fund is allocated by council annually and is augmented with the CDBG public service funds. Council has previously adopted priorities for human services funds, and these are first priority, programs that meet basic human needs, and/or programs that reduce the community impact of homelessness, and/or reduce the community impact of gang violence by providing services directly to gang-involved youth. Second priority is for programs that are preventative in nature or promote the highest degree of functioning the individual is capable of achieving. We're not recommending any changes to the funding priorities. The amount of human services funding for the last few years has been stable. Council has allocated 726, 150 in the last two years, and we're requesting level funding for fiscal year 2020. In order to be eligible to receive these funds, applicants must be tax-exempt nonprofit organizations or local units of government, and their proposals must directly benefit City of Santa Barbara residents that are low and moderate income. Council has previously adopted the criteria shown here, and we're not making any recommended changes this year. So, in order to be eligible, applicants must demonstrate that their proposals benefit low- and moderate-income residents, address specific social and physical needs, present a marketing strategy, particularly the efforts to target ethnic communities. They must show support from the intended clients that they're proposing to serve. They must identify all funding sources, including any public or private funding. They must have reasonable administrative costs, and they have to identify geographical service area. In addition, any organizations that use human services funds to pay for their staff and meet the local minimum wage get an extra bonus point. For a full description, you can look at attachment one of your staff report. All applicants that submit an application will be evaluated on these criteria. Agency, that means past performance and administrative overhead. The board composition, the level of involvement within the organization. The program's impact, that means whether they can provide bicultural, bilingual staff. They're evaluated on the quality of their service and the training and capacity that the staff have. They're evaluated on their measurable outcomes, and that's, we define it as realistic, measurable results or changes that the client will experience from receiving that specific service. Need, whether there is a duplication of service and whether the applicant collaborates with other agencies. Finances, so they're evaluated by their financial stability. And for capital, in addition to these criteria, they're also evaluated on the project itself. So, it must be clearly defined and must meet federal, state, and local regulations, and must be feasible. The project need, so the applicant clearly identifies the need for the project and identifies who will benefit from that project, and the cost, the reasonable-ness of the project and the viability without any city funding. Funding recommendations are made to council by the Community Development and Human Services Committee. Their role is to analyze and evaluate all the applications and interview the applicants. This group will recommend to council which organizations to fund and by how much. Throughout their year, they monitor grantees' performance by reviewing performance reports and by conducting site visits of the funded organizations. They also provide input to staff and council on the needs of this community. Upon council's authorization today, notifications will be sent out to interested applicants of the funding opportunity. A mandatory orientation workshop will be held on November 9th at 2:30 p.m. At this orientation, we will go over the eligibility requirements and the process for submitting an application. The applications will be available online on November 12th and will be submitted electronically through Zoom Grants. Staff will review early submittals and provide early feedback to any organizations that want my feedback, and we give them an opportunity to correct any errors prior to the deadline. And the deadline will be on December 18th at 4:30 p.m., during which time the system will be locked. will be locked. Mandatory applicant interviews will take place in late January and early February. The interviews are open to the public, and the committee always invites council, we understand you're, you're busy folks, but they really get happy when you're there, so they would love to see you if you can. The full schedule is attached on, in your staff report as attachment two. Once the committee makes its recommendations, they will be presented to you, council, on the 26th of March. So that is all my presentation. To recap, we ask council to authorize staff to solicit proposals for human services and Community Development Block grant funding for fiscal year 2020. We ask council to approve the proposed application review process and provide direction to the Community Development and Human Services Committee on Funding Criteria and Priorities. And we ask council to establish a funding commitment for fiscal year 2020 from the general fund in the amount of 726,150 for the human services program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stotts. Are there any questions for Ms. Stotts, for me to one? No? Do we have a, a motion to do anything? Oh. Do you have a, do you like, no? What's that?
Do you want to ask for public comment?
Do I want to ask for public comment? No? No? Not really. Just, if nobody has a question for staff, we have no discussion, so. Ms. Sneddon.
Wholeheartedly like to move the staff recommendation.
Second. Okay, staff recommendations, are you talking about A, B, and C?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Moved by Sneddon, second by Gutierrez. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so ordered, thank you. Move on to item 14. And Ms. Clerk, would you read the item?
Certainly. Item 14, contract for construction for off-leash dog area and accessibility improvements at McKenzie Park.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem and City Council members. My name is George Thompson. I'm the Parks and Recreation Department's Capital Project Supervisor. This item before you today is the culmination of about four and a half years of developing a, a new off-leash dog facility, and we're excited to present this opportunity before you. The project is at McKenzie Park, and just for reference, I'll, I'll walk through this aerial to talk about the off-leash dog area as well as some accessibility improvements. There's an existing parking lot at the entrance off Las Pecitas Road, so hopefully you can see my pointer here. Here's the existing parking lot. The new off-leash dog facility is proposed at the far end, closer to where De La Vina and State Street intersect. Currently, it's a underused area, formerly housed the parking, or sorry, the playground for the park, and that's since been relocated closer to the parking lot. We also have two existing baseball fields, quite obvious there, a restroom, and a multipurpose building that's rented by the community, and then the upper park has the lawn bowls area. So just, you know, off-leash dog areas are fairly self-explanatory. You take your dog off the leash, and they play with other dogs, and you get to talk to your neighbors, but there are some interesting quirks to that. You get to meet people that you don't necessarily know in your neighborhood by having this central meeting place. We chose this place, and I'll talk a little bit more on that process, because it is convenient for people to walk to in the neighborhood, and there's a mix of housing types close by. I mentioned neighbors meet, dogs socialize, but there's also recreational component. Exercised dogs are often better well-behaved dogs in terms of getting their energy out, and so that has good repercussions for our community. And there actually is a, a component for the owners to exercise as well, if you're throwing a ball or participating in a dog agility class, which occurs at McKenzie Park as well. Okay, back in 2014, we started developing a feasibility study for off-leash dog areas and really looked at all of the city's park inventories. I'll talk about that a little bit more on the, on the next slide. But this whole process really came to the forefront through a citizen petition asking for an off-leash dog area. We developed the feasibility study, took it to the Parks and Recreation Commission for review, developed the design, ABR approved it, and then we took one more step and went to the Access Advisory Committee to look at other issues in the park in terms of accessibility and compliance with ADA and, and folks with disabilities that are trying to get around that park. So looking at all the potential sites in the city, we looked at the existing sites, which include the Douglas Family Preserve, Hale Park on the eastern border of the city over here, Ealing's Park, privately managed, and then also the beachfront here from Shoreline up to Henry's Beach. All of those are permitted off-leash dog areas. The community is allowed to take dogs on leash in almost all of our parks, except for Plaza de Leguera and the beachfront from this point all the way to the eastern city limit. In terms of off-leash dog areas, we don't have currently an enclosed off-leash dog area, and those are very different in terms of the, really the confidence that dog owners have to take their dog off leash and know that they're not going to walk down the cliff at DFP or run away if they're a new dog or hard-to-control dog. So this really is a different type of off-leash dog facility. So we looked at all of the park inventory, and really these five areas rose to the top: McKenzie, Dwight Murphy, Ortega, Sheffield, and Plaza Veracruz. And McKenzie really rose to the top and for various reasons, which, which I'll explain, but these other ones that are left over are still viable areas, and so we're kind of looking at the McKenzie as a pilot project in terms of working out some of the kinks as a new off-leash dog area. But these are certainly all viable areas for future development. So the McKenzie Park concept, as I mentioned, there's unutilized space currently, so this is looking out towards here, State Street, De La Vina bends around to the corner. This is an interesting memorial for Dr. Lemus, who is a pillar of our society in Santa Barbara from the 60s, 70s into the 80s. That memorial is, is slated to remain. Other than that structure, there really was not a lot happening in this area of the park. Now, off to the left of the area in the photo is a, a nice grass area where dog agility classes, unprogrammed space is, is housed, and then, as I mentioned, there's mixed housing nearby, a great population for dog owners to come to the park. So as we developed this concept, we held an onsite meeting, invited all the neighbors, businesses nearby, and we also did an online survey, which got a, a great response. So through both of those methods, we anticipate that there is going to be a lot of use for the park, daily use, and most typically, it's going to be after work. That's when we anticipate most folks are going to be coming to the park. Through both of those methods of outreach, we did see that there are concerns about noise, increased noise, and increased parking demand. One of the issues is, in this neighborhood around the corner, there are some businesses that generate a lot of parking demand, and the neighbors in Sammercan do have concerns about that. The good thing about McKenzie is it does have its own parking lot, its own dedicated parking lot, unlike some of the other sites that we evaluated that don't have their own parking lot. So this really pointed towards the site being ideal. Okay, the specific design, again, for reference, this is State Street running here, and De La Vina loops back up. There's an existing entrance into the park. The design is such that you have separate areas for big dogs, so that'd be here, and then smaller dogs have their own area here. And that's a little bit of a fluid definition, big dog, little dog, but what we're proposing to do is have a weight cutoff, and so typically, we've seen 25 to 30-pound dogs are considered big dogs. However, if you're a big dog with special needs, you'll have the free pass to go into the small dog area. In these sorts of situations where you're taking a dog on leash into a off-leash area with, let's say, a dozen off-leash dogs, it's good to enter into the area with your dog off leash. There's actually a double-gated corral where you walk in with your dog on leash, out of the park, general park area, unleash your dog, let them assess the situation, and then open up that inner door. It just leads to less conflicts, and your dog feels a little bit more comfortable. Through this project, we are enhancing the entry plaza. Public Works, our Public Works Department really did a great job of enhancing this crosswalk with the flashing beacon. It's really nice, and so now we're going to the next step and making a proper entrance into the park. It's the main pedestrian entrance into the park. We're doing lighting, accessibility improvements, new landscaping. Specifically to address the noise issues, there is a hotel right next door, and then up slope is Sammercan, so this proposed wall is actually going to be solid concrete, prefab wall, six feet tall. And then on the hillside, we've got a row of pine trees that really do a good job of mitigating some of the noise issues. These areas are for dog owners. They're kind of amenity areas where you'll have trash cans, doggy bags, drinking water for the dogs, benches to sit on, and that'll be a, a nice area for owners to socialize. Now, of course, with the new facility, we can anticipate other considerations for operations and maintenance. We're developing a, a set of rules that'll be posted on the entry gates that'll include hours of use, specific rules to deal with having your dog licensed, aggressive dogs, proper etiquette and so forth, and then obviously cleaning up after your dogs. Currently, the park is open from sunrise to a half hour after sunset, and that's what we're proposing the off-leash dog area operating hours to be as well. It'll be kind of a learning period as the park is developed and in use, and certainly our Parks Division will have daily maintenance responsibilities, both within the off-leash dog area, emptying trash cans, raking, cleaning, the, the usual, but we can also anticipate in the existing restroom that'll also have a higher demand, and so we'll need to keep an eye on that. In terms of enforcement, our primary response is going to be from our park rangers when they're on, on duty, and then obviously the Police Department's Animal Control, similar to how we do enforcement at our other off-leash dog areas. And they'll certainly be involved, both of those entities, and our City Attorney's Office in developing that set of guidelines and rules. Okay, another large component of this project is accessibility improvements, and I briefly mentioned the State Street entrance, making all of that area accessible. We do have a lot of old pathways that were developed over the last several, really decades at the park that do not meet current building code and are not accessible. Perhaps one of the more difficult areas to navigate if you are trying to get into the park and you have a disability, the accessible parking space is not accessible, so you, by code, you can't actually get into the park via code-compliant pathways, so we're proposing to install access ramps and new pathway to get to the off-leash dog area, baseball fields, restrooms, playground, and the McKenzie Center. So all of the amenities in the park through this project will become accessible. Okay, the construction bid summary, we have the base bid for the off-leash dog area, and then we have the bid alternates, and really the bid alternates deal with the accessibility issues, the additional pathways. And so the way that we set up the bid alternates is basically a menu of discreet project elements that contractors can bid on. We award the project on the base bid amount, which is the State Street entrance, landscaping, lighting, amenities, and the dog, off-leash dog area. With these bid alternates, we've got the accessibility improvements, certain segments of pathways. We also included a baseball scoreboard project that we're collaborating with Pony Baseball on. We're not recommending that we award that because of the high-dollar amount for the bids, but for the two bids that we did receive, Quincon Incorporated was a low bidder at 414,181, and that's for the base bid. And so in this next slide, I'll walk through the bid alternates. So the design and pre-construction subtotal for the project came out to just a little over $100,000. The low bid is this line right here, 497,862 from Quincon, and that does include bid alternates two and three. And just to jump into what that means, that's connecting all of those facilities via accessible pathways. So those are the two bid alternates. We do include a typical 10% change order authority, which gives the Parks and Rec Director authority to increase the contract amount if we find areas that we didn't anticipate. So the construction contract itself is 547,648. We've got some additional costs. Some of these things have actually already been done, such as the new electrical meters already installed, but if you're looking at the grand total, the project comes out to about 693,682. The project is funded through several accounts, and, including the main capital account through Parks and Recreation. We're also using Public Works Walkways and Building Pathways and the ADA Transition Plan, so those are really two accounts that are specifically designated to improve city, city facilities for accessibility, and this project really aligns with those priorities. And here is the recommendation. The first bullet item is to award the contract to the low bidder, and then also authorize the bid alternates and the Park and Rec Director to have the change order authority. The second bullet item is for really funding the project, so this moves money from the Public Works accounts over to the project account in Parks and Recreation. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. First of all, I'm very excited about this project, and, and we hear about it a lot, I think, Councilmember Friedman and myself in our districts. I had a question about the demolition of the vacant building on slide 11. Is, is that the building that's close to the playground?
Mayor Protem and Councilmember Sneddon, that actually is a vacant building that was at the far end of the park where the off-leash dog area is going, so that was a former youth activities building that had not been in use for over a decade. We did have some lead and asbestos issues there that we already abated, and the building has since been removed.
So it's, it's not the building that's over towards the playground that's used by Girls' Rock?
No, it's not.
Okay. Thank you. That was my only question, and then just comment that the improved access to have an actual entryway to the park from that crosswalk is really excellent. I think there's, it's confusing sometimes, you get there and you don't know where to come in, and the whole project, I'm very favorable, in favor of.
Hey, Mr. Friedman.
Thanks, just to, like, kind of, one question in three parts. So when, when would you expect construction to start, and about how long would it last, and, and when would the grand opening, or when would it be open for use?
Mayor Protem and Councilmember Friedman, we're anticipating construction to start on November 26th, so the week after Thanksgiving. We've got some paperwork to do with the contractor after award of contract. With the bid alternates added to the construction schedule, we're anticipating the park to be open to the public by February 1st. Given weather conditions, and we are forecasting an El Nino this year, but given good weather conditions and good construction days, we should be open to the public by February 1st.
Thank you, and I think this is a great project, and thank you for the outreach you've done to the community.
Mr. Dominguez.
Well, I hope you guys do make it rain. We'd all thank you for that. Thank you for bringing this to us today. It's a, it's a great project. I think it's going to bring a lot of benefit to a lot of residents. It's certainly worth the money that we're spending, so thank you. I'm definitely in support of this.
So I had a question. First of all, I hate to seem insensitive, but I've never heard the term "special needs dog" before, so I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. You said lighting, is it, remind me, is the baseball field lighted at that park?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, as council members, it's lit when it's in use, so by permit only.
Oh, okay, I just, because I just thought about our night use of parks, and I thought about the neighborhoods, and you said lighting, so the dog walk would be open after sunset? Or no? Is it the lighting is for safety on the?
Mayor Protem, council members, the, the lighting that's proposed are two pedestrian-scale lights, and that's only at the park entrance off of State Street, so there's one light there and then another light about another 60 feet or so in. They're not intended for the off-leash dog area. It's really for- It's really for safety egress out of the park.
All right, very good. Any further questions or comments for staff? Now entertain a motion, if anybody's got one? So move, Friedman, second, Sneddon? Both parts? A and B? Okay. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? So, so ordered, thank you. All righty then, I think that's it. We'll go to council member committee assignment reports. Mr. Dominguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee this morning with councilmembers Friedman and Sneddon and we're just planning for sea level rise and looking at what the city can do to help protect businesses, residents, et cetera, over the next century. And I attended the Rotary Club's 100-year anniversary. It's a very special anniversary for them and it was great hearing all the, the stories about the successes they've had in terms of their public service and what a great club it's been providing a social and public service outlet for so many. I attended the Visit Santa Barbara Board of Directors meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you. Attended COME meeting yesterday and now that the separation agreement with ID1 has been finalized, we have a draft amendment to the JPA to reflect those changes in their exit and that will come back to council for our approval on November 4th, I believe, is the tentative date. And our, the council of COME made a point to say a special thank you to Dan Henchke, one of our city attorneys, for his excellent work on this item. Also with COME, we're still on track for delayed deployment of the emergency pumping facility. Kyoto Creek crossings five and nine will be complete this week and so far everything is under budget, so that's in good shape. I also attended the Sea Level Rise Committee meeting today. We did elect officers. Dave Davis is vice chair and I will be chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you. I attended a open house at the Friendship Center in Montecito and got to see the facility and the services they offer to the elderly community. And I also got to attend the Stand Down Veterans Event in Santa Maria, which was a great, all the services that, that are being offered to veterans. It was really moving to be able to meet and speak with some of the veterans there. And I also got to deliver clothing and toys to the children that are being detained at the border. So it's a busy week, but rewarding. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Hart?
I also attended the Visit Santa Barbara Board Meeting and Nina Johnson made a presentation to the board about the states, the city's efforts to revitalize State Street, really well received. Folks were really pleased and Nina did a great job representing the city. I attended the Coast Fall Gathering and Dennis Story was awarded recognition for his rail advocacy efforts over the past 20 years. It's been that long working on commuter rail. And I also attended the 30th anniversary for the Santa Barbara Women's Political Committee. It was an amazing event, very powerful, active women board members over 30 years promoting women in the community as leaders. And then in a totally different event was the Colabs Annual Event up at the Chumash Casino with 700 people from all over the county.
Mr. Friedman.
So I attended the Water Commission hearing as, as the alternate where we discussed the long-range water supply and that will be coming as it does every month. Also attended the Emerging Leaders Program Sixth Graduation for the new cohort and it was a great event with a, a lot of community leaders and networking between North and South County for graduation. So congratulations to the new cohort. I too attended the Sea Level Rise Subcommittee and in relation to that, I attended the Surf Rider Foundation's monthly meeting and they had Dave Hubbard, who's working on the vulnerability assessment, speak on just sea level rise in general. And I gave a, a quick update on our efforts here at the city, including our Subcommittee. And there was about 40 people that were in attendance.
All right, thank you. Mr. Gutierrez, you have anything else? You have, your lights on. Okay. And I think that's it. With that, we stand adjourned. Thank you.